Let's go.
You've been asked to now, but you're not asking our fans. Like, did you use September? No, we don't get you the morning. Check out the property.
Well.
And then.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. Let's go. Um, all right, it is 2:50 PM. We'll wait till I hear the, like, meeting recordings. It's good? Okay. All right, great. All right, it's 2:50 PM. I'm gonna go ahead and call the work session to order. Secretary, if you could do the roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Carrillo.
Yes.
Mr. Obersing.
Present.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Manis.
I am here.
Manis.
All right.
God, I wouldn't, and never mind. Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Um, Secretary Ingham here. Vice Chair Gibson. Time to hear. I, I'll give you credit. Okay, and Chair Burke? Did I miss somebody? And obviously Sharon Crosser Shilridge is not here. I did, I did get, I'm sure I got.
Eight of us.
Eight of us is here.
All right, item number two, discussion of the community input hearings, and this is a joint, so I'm just handing it over to both Director Russell and Ms. Barnes at the same time. You guys figure it out.
I'll start with this one. We have another joint memo tomorrow that I'll let Director Russell do tomorrow. We were asked to pull together what kind of exists about community input hearings. You have to have one. It has to be transcribed. Commissioners need to be able to review them if they weren't able to attend in person. It assumes you're gonna do a subcommittee, but honestly, I think the whole Charter School Act assumed much more that you would get a lot of new schools, and what you're getting now is kind of district schools and renewed schools. So I think they were just assuming there would be a lot of work, but you don't tend to do that. You tend to post them as meetings. The, in fact, it is on the website. Director Russell was just showing me today. It's posted on the website as a meeting. And then, uh, there is that public input there. I guess I wanted to mention that I don't see any requirement for people to show up twice. They don't need to show up here and at a community input. They are the same. They have, they have given their community input if they showed up at that or they show up here, and I don't see an obligation to show up twice. And, and frankly, if there was ever, like, if we ever had to count how many people were here for community input, I would not count someone twice if they said it twice, so.
Right, and, and the, the requirement for the transcript is if any commissioners do not attend. So, I mean, if you delegated it to a subcommittee, then, you know, a subcommittee of commissioners could hold the hearing, and then there would be a transcript so that the remaining commissioners would have access to read it prior to the vote.
Um, and then we have, we've had that question, that was a question by a former commissioner, I remember, can I vote? I'm like, yes, you have an opportunity to read the community input hearing if you weren't there. There is, interestingly, not an obligation for a commissioner to read the community input hearing, but just to have, so you have access to the entire record. The second thing, which I think is maybe more what you wanted to talk about, is about applicant questions during the community input hearing. So, we just pulled together kind of how that is done. You, there are two things in rule that say that you have to rule and you, you have to make a decision. You have to, um, uh, decide on a series of criteria. That's what you were going ahead and doing today. That implies that you can ask questions. You do have something, well, I'll tell you, you know, you have a community input hearing. Immediately after the community input hearing is where the letter from the chair goes out, and you will recall that that has everything from the peer review. It does not yet have the CSD recommendation. It has any questions that CSD may ask and any questions that you all ask, and that letter goes out 30 days in advance so that the people who show up at a hearing like today are prepared to answer your questions. So, if you, and there isn't anything now that says that you will ask questions at the community input hearing. So, um, but it is implied that you may ask any questions that you have. You need to make a decision and you need to have been able to have asked your questions. But I think that it is true that the, the applicants don't have any notice now that you are gonna ask them questions at the community input hearing. It has been, um, my observation, I think, Director Russell as well, that you all tend to not replicate your questions in one hearing to the other. You tend to say, somebody said today, oh, I got all my questions answered, or I heard it at the community input hearing. So, um, these, I think, are somewhat shorter because you ask questions at the community input hearing, but the timing cycle or notice notifying people that you will ask questions is a little bit off. I, I, that's, I don't know, I don't, I, that's my opinion of that. Is that you send out a letter and say, here's all the questions we're gonna ask you, but they just could have been asked a lot of questions at the community input hearing the week before. That isn't, asking questions isn't any part of the community input hearing. That doesn't mean you can or you can't ask questions, but it's, that is a community input hearing, and that's all that's required. Director Russell, did you wanna add anything?
No, Commissioners, Ms. Barnes has summed it up. Well, the only thing I will add, it, actually, no, it's about the new application process overall, so let's keep it on point.
I'm just gonna add one thing. I don't know how you could even, you don't really have, because the timeline is so difficult, you don't have the peer review to have looked at, to have sent out a letter 30 days before a community input hearing. You know, we actually sent the letter immediately after the community input hearing intentionally so that you guys could say, I heard this at the community input hearing, or this concern was raised. You know, that's the first time you could hear from a district, for example. So that's why we did that timing. So the only piece of it that's off is, I'm not sure off is the right way, is, is they don't have any notice, really, that you're gonna ask a bunch of questions at the community input hearing. All right, time for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. They don't have a notice that they're gonna ask questions. There's a piece of me that says, well, the commissioners are gonna come. Why are they coming if they're not gonna ask questions? You know, I think, to me, I even, it's on my, I spent, there were a lot of applicants the year before I came on, and I went to every community input hearing just to try to figure out, and one of the community input hearings lasted so long, it came back, they came back the next day. You know, because there were, like, so many, it was, it was, I almost, I started to reevaluate why I was getting on the commission, 'cause it's like, wow, I never thought it was gonna be that ugly, and it, it really was. So, would it be sufficient enough simply to, when they're, when we're doing the training for the process of the new application, to simply make the applicants aware that the community input hearing is an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions? I mean, I don't think it is possible for us to write down, here, you know, like in the letter, 'cause the letter are the gaps. The letters are, you know, I'm still not sure about this. I didn't hear this, or I heard this, and now I do have a question about it, but it is in the application. 'Cause to me, you know, today is more the pomp and circumstance, to a great extent, of the event. Because we've done the community input hearing where, for me, it's the greatest opportunity for the school to have all of its posse in place because they're local. It becomes harder for schools to come up here and get that all together, and the people to be able to give that time. But you've got, you, you have had that opportunity for people, and I don't, I don't expect the same. And a lot of the people that spoke today were different than the people who spoke at the, some of them are the same, but they did have new people that, that spoke as well. I don't expect them to bring all those people again. To me, the support for a school is when that community comes out in their community because they do have that opportunity, a better opportunity to take maybe an hour out of work, stop by that community input hearing, say something, as opposed to, even though they can't log on. You know, yeah, for me, the community input flushes out, for me, more of my questions because they do have, I think they bring everyone to the table to the community input hearings. And then I do have a couple, and it was long, but the things that I asked actually were things I didn't really ask at the community input hearing today, 'cause I went back over the application again, and, you know, here's still a few questions. So, um, you know, I, to me, it's critical, uh, I, I think we have to look at statutory changes, because I, you know, I don't, I don't have an issue with the community input hearing. To me, there is a timing issue. I think everything is crunched into, you know, when, when applicants say, I have, we wish we had an opportunity to submit this and say, oh, here are the flaws. And I know Missy spends a lot of time with them, but once it's submitted, it's submitted. And if they, if they left something out, too bad, so sad. And there isn't that opportunity because they're doing the NOI in January. And granted, they should have been working on the application before then, but, you know, yes, they have probably, but not as rigorously. And then they have, from January to June, your trainings, try to get that help, and there is no opportunity for an applicant to say, can you review this? And then give me that feedback, unless they do it within that, before the June. And that's a tough timeframe. And they also have to have an idea of where they may wanna locate and do all of that to be ready for us. To me, um, and I was talking to Becca before, NACA is actually, one of the things they're proposing is that, before you even do the NOIs, that you have, and I'm gonna go back to my shark tank analogy, you do a pitch. I've got this idea, and I'm gonna float this idea before you, before I even do the NOI, to even know whether it's worth my time and effort and energy to work on this, to see if, you know.
There's a state that does that, and then they'll invite you to submit a charter school application. Maybe she.
And I could be wrong on this, but we have been told prior that, as an elected body, we can't do like a, an RFP. But we could prob, other states do. But because we're supposed to be, anyone can apply, but I think the pitch idea at least gives schools a handle on where they are in this thought process. You know, and they could get some feedback, and I don't know if it, we need to be a subcommittee or the full for that feedback to say, hey, you know, that's a great idea, but, boy, you still have a lot to work on before you get to, to this point. And then they do the NOI, and I think the NOI is maybe a little more detailed, and then they do the application. So they've actually had more, they've had to put more thought themselves into this before they get to the actual writing the application. Because they had to put a lot of thought and get a lot of planning set with the pitch. And maybe you could even incorporate community input on a shorter, smaller scale there, just to even know, does the community support this? Is it worth the pitch? But if they don't have anyone from the community show up for the pitch, it's like, well, yeah, that's a fabulous idea, but does anyone actually want that in your community? They may not really want it. So, but that requires, I think, an extension of the application timeframe. And I think that's what needs a serious look at and revamp, because I think what we've put into that IY is important, but is that a year, or is it really a year and a half? You know, and let's, you know, what are, what are, what, you know, we're expecting schools to be doing all of this, and is it unrealistic? I don't think what we're asking is unrealistic, but I think the timing is somewhat unrealistic.
Commissioner Carrillo, then?
Some reading, um, the notes here on, online under this. So, but my opinion is, we're just kind of looking at this right now. There's not anything being proposed, or.
I think it's.
We're just examining what the process is, is there a way to be fine tuned?
Is this something that we want to send to a subcommittee? Is it something that we want to, like, go further on, or do we wanna, like, not look at it right now?
Not look at it right now. I think if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I mean, I think that, I mean, aside from the fact that sometimes you're gonna have a school in the southern part of the state and schools in the far north. I mean, and, you know, that's not all the time, but it is what it is, right? And, um, you know, I mean, the only thing I think needs, that we need to pay more attention to sometimes is making sure that the commission weighs in more on the, the timing, location, you know, just how, what's gonna be where, um, so that as many commissioners can participate. A lot, you know, I, I interviewed the community for hearing. I think about the Alamo Roadhouse one. There were so many things that were brought up in that hearing by people from the district, people from the base, people from, you know, it's all walks of life attending this. And also, some of them, it was interesting, definitely some of them had a bone to pick with clearly some of the people that were involved, and, but you're getting a sense of the community. And is this something that can really be pulled off, given the animus that may exist, you know, when you're, when you're sitting there? And, um, you know, there's a one, the one we had in Bernalillo, I mean, clearly you are beloved in your community. Everybody thinks you walk on water, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna be able to, you can get this over the finish line. And, um, I, I, I like the way it works right now.
Commissioner Ngam.
Commissioner Gibson had an interesting comment there about the NOI being a little bit more rigorous and giving schools maybe a little more understanding of what they were getting into in the NOI process, and giving some coaching to them for that. I mean, so the idea of pitching something and then having a period, and then maybe having a more rigorous NOI process kind of appeals to me because I just feel like I, I want, I, I obviously encourage more charter schools. I mean, just in general, I wanna see this, this be a real example to public, for public education. But I, I, I really feel like that, that drop-dead timeframe for the application and really having no back and forth during that time, or, or minimal, is really problematic. So I, I would agree. I mean, maybe having the NOI process be more informative rather than just dropping a, a note saying, yeah, we wanna do this. No, I think we want to know that you know what you're getting into, at least a little bit, you know. Anyway, that's all I was thinking.
Commissioner Beck?
I'm sorry. So I just wanted to add, I think, to me, I'd like, I think we can, I'd like to see getting rid of, I think, a lot of the written part of that application. That it's, I think there's other, I think there's other ways to find out what we need to find. I think there's things that are in the application that are, is accomplished through the implementation year, or could be. And I think there's perhaps things that aren't in the application that would help us make a better decision to show that capacity of the team than, you know, regurgitating stuff that everyone kind of knows every public school has to do anyway. You know, and it's like, you know, I don't need to know that, I, I want, I wanna know how you're gonna do it, not that you're going to do it, because we already know, if you don't do it, you're gonna close. That's the bottom line. But, and I don't think, that's not what we're getting out of the application. We're getting, you know, we try to say, don't do citations and things like that, but it's like, oh, yeah, here's all these references. So there's just, there's gotta be, you know, there's always a better mousetrap. But I think there's gotta be a better way that we can be asking them to show us how you're gonna do it, because we're not getting that out of the application, to me, at this point in time.
And I won't be verbose on this. I agree with both of them. I think the idea, I always wondered why the NOI was so small, and the application was so massive. And, I mean, it doesn't take a lot, it, I mean, um, perspective, which might be way off. I don't think it takes a hell, a heck of a lot of work to do decent, uh, NOI, but it takes a ton of work to do the application, and that's where it falls off. So I like their idea, but more importantly, I think it's a good idea to put to a subcommittee. I mean, I think that's, I think that's where we're all getting to consensus on, to really look at it like that, especially to these guys' point, the timing of it.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I will say that, that I'm in favor of making this process a little less arduous for the, for the applicant in some degree. So if we increase the rigor of the NOI, something else has gotta give, you know, because I don't wanna just put a bigger burden on them during this process, so. Yeah, subcommittee. Right.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I, I, I do think this does need to get looked at as well. Um, I actually, I, I, and what my proposal will be is not necessarily to send it to subcommittee, like, today, but instead put it as part of our list on the strategic plan of things that we need overhauls on, which we already have the new application as part of that. We have the implementation year checklist as part of that. I think this coincides with that. Um, and so kind of making it part of, like, what does our system of approving a new school look like? And then I think we can get creative. We can, we can look at what it makes sense and what it looks like. Because I also wonder, actually, like, I wonder if there's a way we can rearrange the, our question time? Because to me, it almost feels like we're undermining the intention of it's community input hearing. So for us to be involved in, like, the, it, like, the purpose of it is the community input, not our questions. But we still need those questions. Like, we still need to have the opportunity to kind of start sorting out through things with them so that the hearing, but also I still have been a weary concern because one of the things I hear sometimes is it feels like by the time an applicant gets to the hearing, it's not actually a hearing.
Yeah.
It's already been, everyone already kind of knows what they're gonna vote. No one's really changing their mind during the hearing, 'cause everything's kind of already been considered done, and it is pomp and circumstance, but that doesn't necessarily feel good to an applicant team to feel like they're coming up, trying to convince people who cannot be convinced anymore. So I don't know the balance in there as well. So I, what I would say is, put this on the list, back to Director Russell again, of, you know, when we're looking at the notice of intent, application, community input hearing, PEC questions, the actual hearing of, of, like, what an appeal looks, you know, like, all, like, what does this process look like? And what is the bare minimum? And then what could we do to increase quality and rigor from our side without any legislative changes? And then being able to really put our fingers on, this legislation is preventing us from doing good work. And so just considering it as a whole system, instead of, like, today pulling it off, one-off, and sending it off to get looked at independently.
Well, I just have one question, because when we have had conversations about the NOI, the NOI isn't ours. Because you're putting a notice of intent to possibly open a charter school, but you don't have to commit to us or the district at that time. So for us to put more meat into the NOI, a district, you know, so that's where I have the question, 'cause the NOI doesn't get posted from us, it gets posted from PED.
Yeah, that's true. It's a statutory requirement with very minimal things. And we rely, or, I'm gonna say, I rely on it. I think you rely on it. Later, if a school district says that, why didn't you tell us, or whatever, I go back to, well, there was an NOI, and that's the point. And you guys, I've seen schools be turned down the next day if they didn't give it to the right notice. So there's kind of that notice. I see nothing that would stop you from starting your application process. So maybe not January 6th or whatever, but, you know, maybe within 30 days or something. And schools can, I mean, applicants can decide, no, we're not gonna go down the PEC process, or we are and we're still gonna apply. I don't see that that's a barrier to you. It might be. And anything they do to prepare an application for the PEC is also preparation for an application to a district. So I don't see that it's necessarily different. That might just be a timing.
Minimums, we can always ask for more. We just can't do any less.
That's right.
And, uh. But the NOI isn't ours.
Statutory oblig, it's, but it's a minimum. So we, we can, in our process, we can do more than is what is statutorily required.
You're already doing that because we've already got.
We don't issue the NOI.
Right, but, but. Take the NOI and use it how we want.
And there's more in the NOI than statute requires.
Right.
It's very minimal in statute.
Yes, he is also, at your request, giving feedback on the NOI so that somebody doesn't do a huge application when there's a big, major legal problem. So they've been doing that for the last couple of years for you.
Would there be, and maybe I'm getting into what a subcommittee would be, should be looking at, or whatever, but would there be any barrier for us to say, well, you know, we're starting our process in October with, like, the pitch, before you even do the NOI? Pitch us the idea and get that feedback to know whether for, you know, that, that could help them in a determination whether they're gonna go with the district or with us, but could we start that process informally earlier than the NOI?
As long as it didn't bar them from submitting an NOI. As long as it didn't bar them from submitting an NOI.
Has the start date.
And.
Submit the June before.
We could also have, we could also have a, you can submit a draft application for feedback in April.
Right.
And then you submit your final application in June. And it makes the the June application a lot less all or nothing, high stakes.
Right. Yeah, but could you do that? Well, I think that's the, so could you do that in April and still get the, could you do that? Because to me, that feedback from the capacity interview would be important, too.
So I'm trying to think, I'd have to look at statute to see when the capacity interview is mentioned. I think it's after the.
Mentioned.
Yeah.
It's only in rule.
But I mean, but we could have a preliminary, like a pre-capacity interview with this, this less formal. And that's what, I mean, national best practice is moving in that direction anyway, which I'm thrilled to to hear about. NACA and some other states are talking about moving from paper to people. So that there's not this big, high stakes, written application with everything but the kitchen sink. And you can pay some grant writer or AI to do it for you. It's like more frequent, yeah, I heard some authorizer talking on the NACA's podcast about how they do a series of, their capacity interview isn't one 90 minute interview. It's a series of conversations. That that gives the authorizer a far better picture of of actual capacity.
Right, and I know for us, because funding only comes through CSP and things like that. And other authorizers are different. It's difficult because to me, without having the head administrator there, it's really hard to figure out, is the school? You know, because they can say whatever they want to say. But if you haven't picked the right person, it can, it can all go south or it can be a whole lot better than you thought. But without the funding opportunity, it makes it difficult to have that unless the head, unless that applicant team, as it often is, the applicant team includes the hopeful head administrator. But when it doesn't, it makes it very difficult to assess capacity. Because sometimes those founders aren't even going to be on the GC. And then it's like, well, what am I voting on? Is that all history? Because they said, no, I did my job. I don't want to be on the governance council. I just wanted to help this get off the ground.
So, so one thing, so what I'm wondering right now is, it kind of seems like, as it can, instead of going into like the actual plan, maybe it's a good time to pause, say, yep, we should definitely do deep dive in this. As part of, like, in the strategic plan, let's figure out how to schedule it as like an overhaul. And and our challenge will be for Julia and Bridget and team to start thinking creatively outside the box of just what statute requires. But let's think about like other opportunities to do more or less than what we're doing. And be creative about trying to get those high quality rigorous applications by June 1. Backwards plan, what we could do between now and then. So I think we'll just send it over to like the strategic plan, get it booked in and then start like overhauling it. Okay, all right.
Could I just ask a quick process question? Is in your minds, is this something you would discuss in a strategic planning meeting? Or this is something that we would present, that we would package for you?
So it would be, the strategic plan ideally will have a list of items that need overhauls or updates, scheduled out over the course of one or two fiscal years, so that we're not doing 10 things at once. But it seems like this one, right, maybe, and this is where the strategic plan comes in place. Maybe it's fiscal year one that this needs to get tackled, right? Or maybe the strategic plan we determined, no, this will be fiscal year two because we need to do this in fiscal year one. But that, not the merit of it, not the actual plan, but when are we going to tackle this? Because right now, I think the focus will be, the things that are already on our agendas in the subcommittees are still going through. But actually creating the strategic plan is probably what we're going to be devoting a lot of our work session time to over the next several months. So probably reserving for that work so that we can actually get that done in a timely manner first. And then start doing all the overhauls to where it feels consistent and structured to where we're not overwhelming CSD. Okay. I'm going to skip over to just the number four and then come back to the conference. So we're going to talk first about the proposed regional outreach meetings. This was put on by the budget subcommittee. So Patty, do you want to talk about it? Do you want?
Sure. So over the past several months, at the very least, we have talked about shifting our focus more to the governance councils rather than the head administrator. That it's the contract with the governance council, not with that head administrator. So, and we've also talked about the challenges of schools, especially outside of this area, of being able to come up and truly tell their story to the commission of what their school really does. So at the budget subcommittee, I brought a proposal forward that what we do is we host a, like a Friday night dinner with the governance council. And it could, it could be possible that there's training hours that may come as a result of that. We don't know, you know, exactly what that's going to look like. But it's an opportunity for commissioners to prick bread with the governance council to establish, to begin to establish that relationship. And hopefully, you know, I've sat at conferences where I've had someone who's on a governance council of a school. But I didn't even know they were on the school, but they turn to the person next to them and said, you know, that's the one that can close this down if they want to. That's not how I want to be perceived. Yes, that's true. I mean, that's a fact, but that's not my, hopefully, that's not my role here. That's all my purpose of being on this commission is to close schools down. So there's been, or I think, some fault of the commission at times, but some fault of the charter school division. There's been bad relations established. And the fact that I can't, you know, I can't call them. I'm not going to call them, you know. So I think this is the, is that effort. We're coming to your community and we're, we want to have an honest, open conversation with you. And how can we help you? How can we, because this is a partnership that we have with you. And then on Saturday, it would be an opportunity to host a charter fair. So that the charter schools in that community would be, would have an opportunity. And we, and public would be invited. So it would be that opportunity for public members to come and see the work that charter schools do. And charters would have an opportunity, because they are there in that, in the community to do, you know, they could have their art displayed, they could have bring robots and have demonstrations. They could have, you know, musical presentations. Be their opportunity for the schools in the area to shine for the public, for the commissioners as well. And I think it just helps to just continue that, that goodwill. And I don't, I've always said this, because often what happens at meetings, we don't celebrate enough. Because I'm in schools every day. Because we're focused on, you know, the meeting, so this one's coming up because they're not doing this right. And, you know, that's unfortunate because we've got limited time at our meetings and we do have to make those decisions. But I, I think it really helps commissioners fully embrace what schools are doing in, in the communities. And I think it shows our willingness to not just sit up here. So that was my proposal to the budget subcommittee.
I was just going to add that, that, you know, the governing council, obviously, the members are all volunteer, right? They're required for continuing ed. So I think a critical part of that is offering some sort of continuing ed or hours that they can get while they're there. That will really encourage, I think, part people to to participate, so.
I'm done.
I'm kind of intrigued by the idea, but I'm not understanding. We're like, obviously, we have a lot of charter schools in Albuquerque. And are we talking about having a meeting with each charter school?
No, no, we would host a, an Albuquerque governance council members dinner. So yes, it would be every state charter school governance council member would be invited to this event. We know that that event requires a larger venue than Las Cruces, Gallup. We, we get that. But yes, it would be every member of the, of a state chartered charter schools, governance council would be invited to this function.
How many, how many places are you thinking?
We're only, oh, regionally, so we're talking here, we're talking Gallup, we're talking Cruces, and we're talking probably the Espanola area to cover House, even Santa Fe if they wanted to go there instead of, you know, Albuquerque. So, yeah, it's at least four events.
So you, you wouldn't just do South, Middle, North? You'd do, you'd split North into two?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Just because their drives are so much for like.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, okay, no, that makes.
I mean, it, yeah, yeah. We figured four.
And you obviously budgeted for it.
Right.
Well, yes.
That's what we.
We would have to.
So right now, we don't have it. So that's what we have, we're trying to get you guys to say, yeah, this is a good idea. Or no, this is a terrible idea, we're not going to participate. That way, Consuelo can start the process of looking at how many people, where, how much is it going to cost? And start like figuring out what that actually looks like. But I mean, yes, we have a large budget.
Yeah, I mean, so, and I had said, in my area, we do have one school that has a large gym. And that's a, has a performance stage on it. So for the, for the number of schools that we have, we could probably host a dinner there. And we could certainly do the fair there. That wouldn't, you know, we're paying for the food, but it wouldn't cost as much. Yes, in Albuquerque, you're probably going to have to do something like the convention center. You know, a space like that.
Unless.
Right. Sure. Yeah.
So I guess what I'm, I'm kind of trying to figure out, it seems to me, you're trying to get kind of an intimate relationship with individual school boards. And, okay, so we go to Albuquerque, we have 30, or whatever it is, a ton of charter schools. And we don't get any individual, we end up with the same kind of thing as the charter convention. Where what I'm trying to envision is, we get a set of schools, can we say, rather than a, in Albuquerque, eight schools. Do two nights.
Do two nights?
Just because I, I think would be, it would, I want, I want to have a relationship with those boards.
Right.
And if, if we go and have 40 or 30 schools at one big deal. I, I can't, you know, you can't get any of that.
That's fair.
That's, that's all my concern is, is I'm, I'm kind of a relational guy. And I really want to have that opportunity to meet people. And if you put me in that situation, I'll meet a few, but I won't meet near.
You want us to get sponsors for a happy hour?
Yes.
Yeah. And I, I hear you. I think, I think.
Do much smaller venues. I mean, we could take the South Valley. We, that's my area. And there's, I mean, a bunch of charter schools in that area that could be, could, you know, and you, you don't have to be real specific. Just say, we need eight, eight schools that can work it out to come here and another. But like, if you go to Gallup, you're going to have four, five schools, right?
Right.
And, and, and we'll get to meet a bunch of people there. We'll get to, we'll get that connection. But if we do, and I'm afraid Taos has quite a few charter schools, right? And so we would, I mean, that, but Taos by itself might have enough. I, I don't, I don't know. I just think I would prefer a smaller venue. I recognize that means more. And, and so I, I'm not, I'm not averse to that. You know, I, I just think it would be really, really helpful to have some relationships. So we can get back to the idea that we're here to support you, not to beat you up. And that's what I want to do, anyway.
So are you also, so I'm just, for clarity, because I don't have a problem with what you're saying. Are you also proposing that that fair be hosted separately with the smaller group? Or have the dinners with the smaller group and the fair with the larger group? I'm just thinking budget wise, what we're looking at. And we've got money, but what, so we have a better idea of what the budget subcommittee is going to have to look at.
We, when, we had a fair, last year and the year before last, in the convention center, and it was real attendance. So I think the fair could be for everybody. I think the fair would be for everybody.
The fair you're talking about was ECS and IM's fair, right?
Right, right, right. But that's the same kind of charter schools, we would have a fair to show the thing with, with the public, it'd be the same.
Wondering if, I wonder if instead of a fair, we just do a dinner, a breakfast and like a lunch and allow governing councils to like meet with us and not make it about a fair instead. And just do the governing board outreach.
Isn't that your goal?
Yes.
That's your goal.
And that way.
That would not. System principles.
Yeah, but.
Even like an hour credit.
Continue during that time.
I like the idea better. I think that that's a big commitment, an evening and then the next morning. So I would, I would probably plan just Saturday morning, do a breakfast together and then a lunch. And then if we're not going to do the fair.
Breakfast and a dinner.
Something like that, and yeah. So rather than a two day deal.
Like if they.
Breakfast and a lunch is easier than saying, I'm going to commit myself to a breakfast than a dinner.
No, one or the other.
Oh, gotcha.
You just pick one. We offer multiple opportunities and that way we're splitting up instead of having 150 people all together at once in Albuquerque.
I was going to say.
With dinner Friday night, maybe 50 people come, then we do breakfast the next morning, maybe another 50 come. You know what I, like, split it to where we're in the same location.
Because Berkeley's really the only place where you're going to have that real issue.
Well, I'm thinking three, maybe Albuquerque, just of the size. But then the other ones, we could just do a dinner one night and then a breakfast the next morning. And we're, and then we are out again of that area. And just do that like a couple of weeks in a row. Where Friday night, Saturday morning, Friday night, Saturday, and whatever commissioners can come, great. If not, everyone can come, not the end of the world. But I think the idea to like, give the message to governing board members is, we see you, you're volunteers, we appreciate you. That's like the main thing, right? Like, we see you, we appreciate you, you actually do. And then ideally, like, we sneakily put in there of like, hey, and actually, your role is so important. We know you're, we know you're reading academic stuff on your schools every month. We know you're looking over those financial statements every month, right? Like, we know this work you're doing. And like, as a PEC, we're going to, like, it's a good opportunity for us to like, tell them that our culture is shifting from being, we communicate with head administrators to, we are going to start communicating with you guys and we're going to expect you to be the ones coming up here and talking to us, not your head administrators. Bridget, CSD, they can keep talking to head administrators all they want, every day, all day, keep doing it. But us, our role is actually to talk to the boards, not to talk to head administrators. So kind of just like introducing them to the culture shift of like, hey, we know that we haven't really, we haven't really done this before. This is us, we're humans just like you. And we're going to start doing this. So don't be surprised when you start getting more information directly to your board chair. That's just how it's going to go from now on. And kind of slip that in as part of their. And kind of slip that in as part of their, like, make it a training sneakily. Where, but mostly, it's like an appreciation thing. Like, we want them to feel appreciated, and like, it's, this is a hard job, and they go through, like, they're trying to do their best with what they have. And so just acknowledging that for them. And, and I will say, this is one thing I always loved working with Consuelo, back with the teachers, back with families, back with business people. People like that. Like, just having a space of like, oh, they're providing me a dinner? Like, I mean, and, I mean, even, every once in a while, we would try, we would end up with like Subway or something at one of the dinners, and the teachers would complain, because they're like, how disrespectful. You think we're worse Subway, you know? And so they really do read into these things kind of deeply. And especially in the education community, I think like there's so little given for appreciation that people read really deep into either the absence of it or whatever you do provide. So I do think like, I, I do know Consuelo provides an incredible event every time she plans something. It's gonna be done well. And so having it as like, thank you, and actually, we value you so much, and we're gonna start communicating with you more from now on. And I think that, just to like start that reset of like, we're going to you guys, because you actually matter so much. And if they didn't feel like that before, hopefully, it lights a fire in them a little bit of like, oh, I didn't know I was supposed to be looking at academics every month. Oh, I didn't, I haven't been doing those things. Like, we'll just like kind of talk about what the successful boards are doing, and how grateful we are for all the successful boards that do these things. And if they look at it, and they're like, oh, we don't do that. They can reflect on that themselves and figure it out. I do. Why? I mean, it's, it's a cool way to showcase like the portfolio for the school.
But then get the outreach out. A miss for commissioners who are down there, that they can't see how celebrate schools and what they do. That's where, that's where I see, because schools like in my area say, we can't afford to transport our kids up to your meeting, even at renewal time, to do what the Albuquerque, Santa Fe, even Taus schools get to do in terms of celebration. And no one, no one comes and no one sees what we do. So that's, to me, I, I mean, I proposed the dinner, so I have no problem with any of that. But I think there's a miss, because the charter, the fair is for even private schools. So it's not just a celebration of charters or the charters in, you know, that area. It is a choice fair. You know, I mean, we don't have any dis, like, in my area, we don't have any district charters, but we do have private schools. Not a whole lot, but we do have private schools. So, and.
Maybe what, what I'm wondering.
Venue is really small.
We actually, I just wonder if the charter schools want to do that. Like, I wouldn't want to put a burden on the thing, like, hey, on a Saturday, get some, get kids together, put together this thing, and you have to do it because the PEC is asking you to. And it's like, they're like, why do we, I wouldn't want to, like, this is a lot. Like, it's too much. Like, I don't want to do it, but now I have to. So I wonder if like, just asking them.
That's fine.
In your area, if the PEC hosted a school fair on Saturday afternoon, because I think we still could do that, right?
Right.
Like, do the Friday night dinners, Saturday morning breakfast. That way, the, the board members have two opportunities. And then that afternoon, ask each area, and if there's more than a couple schools that say like, actually, yeah, we want to do that.
Then let them do it.
And do a Saturday afternoon fair in which we're hosting. But then they come and they do the work of like, setting up and being there. But we just provide the space.
Right.
For that. But then if like, we get to an area and they're like, there's only.
Don't do it.
Schools, and they're like, we'll do it. And everyone else is like, nah, don't do it.
Right.
And that way, we're not putting it as an onus on those schools, but we.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair. That's, that's, that's fair for the fair.
Great. Consuelo, Bridget, any questions, confusion, to help? And for the timing of it, we were talking about doing like late February, where it's like, kind of like, it's a, yeah, before the school lotteries all start. And especially that way, those fairs can get, help them with their lottery outreach. That, that's the intention of it, is to help them get their word out about their lottery. Okay. All right. So let's, all right. So that'll bring us to item three, which is the discussion of the Charter School Conference, which was also a budget subcommittee item that's been brought to this. So back to you, Patty.
Okay. So in the discussion of the Charter School Conference, and there is, so we had asked for a breakdown of how many, how many schools attended, how many, how many Governance Council members, how many different schools attended? You've got X amount of people that came, but how many schools did that represent of those individuals? And the fact that, starting with this year, district charters are going to be asked or required to pay a per attendee fee, because it's been coming out of the SEG funds of the state charter schools. So we've been pushing, and now we're taking, so if I give you a little bit of history, when the, when I was first on the commission, we weren't even invited to the charter school conference. We were told that it happened after the fact. Oh, we had a charter school conference, you know, three weeks ago. Oh, you did? Yeah, well, it doesn't really, you had nothing to do with it, so we, we put it on. So it's never been ours, although it's our budget that pays for it. So over at least the last two years, we've really pushed to take more ownership of that conference. So in that discussion, we did have, we did talk about the value of the conference itself, the cost of the conference. I would think we'll have fewer attendees by district charter individuals, because they're not gonna pay. What was it, eight hundred per?
Seven eighty.
Seven eighty-five per, per person, per attendee. So if you take a district charter school and they say, oh, we had six people go, we're not paying that kind of money. We can get those hours someplace else without going to that conference. So that the funds are gonna be a little less. That way, we would have to put more of our money into it, because we would lose that. And we would lose members, attendees at the conference. So what is the value of the conference? So is this a good time to do a reset on looking at the conference? And perhaps take a pause for a year? And so let's really look at this, and through discussions with Bridget, correct me if I'm wrong, I think she's appreciative of the opportunity for the reset, to really be able to take a look at, what are we doing with this? What are the goals of the conference? What, what do we want people to come out of it with? And how do we do it best or better? And it's tough to do that on the fly, when you're in the midst of planning already for that year. So is this a, a good opportunity to say, you know what, let's take a reset, take a pause for a year, and do an evaluation, real evaluation of it, truly get schools' input in, what do you really want to see out of this? Because, and this is no disrespect to the charter school division, but I often hear from Governance Council members, oh, it's the same thing every year. I hear the, you know, coming up, and I'm hearing the same stuff. So, you know, what, and I think when we build out that assurance form from the indicators of success, that self-evaluation that the Governance Council members are gonna be asking to do, they'll actually have a better idea of what they need help with. Right now, they're just grasping at straws. But once they take a look at that, we have those dinners with them, and they say, oh, I really do need to do this. So I would like help with this. It gives us that opportunity to provide a little more targeted and robust support for our Governance Council members and schools as a whole. So the budget subcommittee is placing a proposal out there to do a pause on the conference for this year so that charter school division, the PEC, schools can take some time and evaluate what the goals are of this. It shouldn't just, I absolutely appreciate going and talking with folks. That networking is really important. But I have to also be honest and say, I spend more of my time in the hallway talking to people than I did in any. But the, the sessions aren't for me. But I'm talking to people that are, aren't in there. Their school leaders are saying, nah, you know, I'm good, I've got an hour, you know? So to me, that's an indication that they're not getting out of it what you're hoping, what we're spending the money for. So that's our proposal, is to do a reset for this year. Maybe we can include that, kind of tough, with the strategic plan. You know, to, to help with the strategic plan, take a look at. And maybe we take a look at it and say, you know what? This is something that we come back to every other year, because we're doing those regional meetings. So that that, people are getting more, hopefully, more benefit from that, and that we come together as a group every other year. Something like that. Who knows what it's gonna look like. But I think we need, and I think that it was the consensus of the budget, it's not just me. The budget subcommittee came to this consensus that, stop it. That this is what we do.
Well, there's something in this that kind of offends me, that the, we've been paying for this out of the state-sponsored charter schools, SEG, all these years, and APS, and, I mean, APS specifically, has never ponied up anything.
Never been asked to.
They've never been asked to. In some ways, it feels like to me, we need to ask them to. I, I think that it's really kind of, what offends me is that, that those, those individual schools who are paying their money to that district are now gonna be asked, oh, well, you gotta cover up some more money to go to this if you want to go to it. And so my, my, I think that we have an opportunity here to broaden our horizon with the district schools. And that we really need to talk to districts. We need to just quit with the, get away from me, your district. And, and get to the point where we say, listen, we, we're trying really hard to serve the charter community. You guys get your two percent for these schools, and, and we don't need to be that confrontational. I'm just saying that we, we, we need to have an opportunity, and CSD is still, they, they do have some of their services for every charter school. Am I correct? So, so the reality here is, we're not, I'm not expecting that they, we can put a finger on them or whatever, but, but that we need to make an effort to reach out and say, look, we've been doing this, but we really can't afford to do this for all this, this type. But, you know, we wanna, we, we wanna partner with you on this, on this deal. And so we can, so we can continue to put it on. Every two, I, I don't have a dog in the fight about that. I just have a, I, I'm kind of offended that, that none of those districts, all except that two percent, and they never have even thought of.
We've never asked them.
We've never asked them, but APS ought to have a, I mean, that they know that they, and, and there was quite a few APS schools there, because it's convenient for them, it's a joyride for them. Why can't APS pony up some of their two percent to do that? So anyway, I just have an issue.
Me? I did ask a prior director to have that conversation with district authorizers, in particular APS, and say, what is, you know, would, do you have an interest in partnering with this conference? And we can figure out what that partnership share would be. I don't, so I can't even say that the conversation happened, you know? So I'm gonna say it's unlikely that the conversation happened. So, and I, I'm a hundred percent with you, because that's what I had asked prior to this. When we, when we first started to take ownership of this, I asked for that conversation to take place for the conference that just took place, and say, yeah, yeah, because the one before that, they even paid for hotel rooms. And, but that was out of CSP grant money. They needed to expend CSP grant money, so they paid for hotel rooms. That was, and, but the intention was, for this past one, that that was gonna continue to pay for the hotel rooms. And it's like, we said, no, that is not, it's, you, we can't, we shouldn't. It's not that we can't, we shouldn't. You know? Okay. So I, I agree, because this, this, you have to pay, was not to create any barriers, but it is a fairness.
Yeah.
It is not fair that, you know, even though the Governance Council members of state charters are getting hours out of it, they had, for all intents and purposes, paid for that out of the two percent that was paid. And, you know, and the, and the district charters don't. And I don't want to not support them, but this should be a partnership.
It just, it seems like the most equitable, sorry.
The buddy with Stuart.
Gotcha. APS schools, APS already district charter schools, they need to pay their fair share. Period. There's. Right. But we can't, you know, the schools shouldn't have to do it. They don't have any money. The district should take out of the two percent that they're taking from the school. But there's no free rides.
No, I wouldn't do L E S.
It's a state charter, right? So no free rides for district charters. I am not in support, I mean, I'm probably one of the four people on the Finance Committee. I'm not in support of taking pause for a year. What? Of taking pause for a year and not having a charter conference in spring. Actually, I don't even recall all, when people use the word consensus, they throw it around so freely. Consensus is when you get agreement from everybody, and everyone's needs have been met. And that's what a true, like, it is. But so, I mean, you know, I'm fine being outnumbered, I don't care. It's like the idea of everybody getting together. I think there's so much value in that. You know, the regional things, that's fine. You know, attend where I can, but increasingly, increasingly, everything becomes, for unpaid positions, more and more and more time, right? For all of us, but also for school boards. I mean, governing councils. It's just, they're volunteers too, and, you know, if they're, we're just, we're always, we seem to be asking more. I want them to get their accreditations that they need. That's super important. I want us to meet them. One great way to meet them is go to their board meetings. And, but I just, I, I just wanted to voice that I'm not in support of taking pause for a year on our state conference. I think it, it serves a great value. Everyone comes together. People are all standing in the hall, we need to tell them, you should be in, why aren't you getting your credits right now? Are you out here just?
My job to do that.
I know that, but why are you having a third margarita? But it's just, because it's such an amazing opportunity then, for, for them to take care of all of that. And also, I mean, I think we're offering more and more really good sessions on what, what do good boards do? I don't think it's all redundant. I mean, I think there was one keynote speaker last time that, I don't know, it, it just was, yeah, I mean, why? But, I mean, we can just maybe attract different people that have more to offer in terms of, and I, I don't know how much the cost and where you got, you know? But that'd be my suggestion. But that'd be my suggestion. The regional, the regional things, it's got to be hard. I can't even imagine what Bridgette and Consuelo are going to go through. Because Taos alone, probably after December, is going to have eight state charters. Because it's, my understanding is there are two. Well, there's one there, and then, well, that part of that region of the state. You know what I mean? So they're all clustered. It, it's just interesting. And so putting this, the regional thing together, I think is like, I'm glad I'm not you guys. Because that's a Herculean, I would say, task of trying to, so no one's driving too far or too much time. But, I don't know, those are my thoughts.
Thanks.
So I, I, I do think we need to take a pause, just so we can reorganize the, the, the conference. Eight hundred bucks a person is what it costs. And I can't see the numbers on top, but 55 of those who were district charter attendees. So 800 times 55 were, are, so I do believe that, I do believe that. You know, charging, I think the most equitable way to do that is just charge per person, you know? Pay, you pay $800 for the, for, for every attendee. If that keeps them, that, if that keeps them from coming, that, that's, you know, it's on them, you know, as far as I'm concerned. So, but I do think the pause in the, in the, I do think the pause in the conference is a good idea, just so we can talk about those kinds of things. And make sure that, you know, make sure that we're approaching it in, in equitable way. Create camaraderie amongst the, the district schools and the, and the state schools, you know? Yeah, you want that professional relationship with them. So, I mean, I think there, there's got to be clever ways that we can do that, so.
Question for Bridgette, because it's not on, excuse me, it's not on here. Of the, at this time, this was done, I think we had, excuse me, 59 charters, right? And we just had two open this year, and two next year. So of the 59 state authorized charters, how many had board representatives of the 59?
Gosh, I would have to, so it, it's actually 60, because we lost Ames. So we had 60, and now we have.
Good readings, yeah.
Minus one, plus two. I would have to, how many? I'd need to ask Bianca. I can get it before tomorrow's meeting. One thing, I don't know if commissioners, if you've seen it in the work session materials, there is a second document, Conference Survey. I, I sent out a survey to head administrators, asked them to forward it to their boards, very short turnaround, to letting them know that the commission was talking about it at the work session and meeting. I only had 24 responses, 10 board members and 14 head administrators. But Lucy will scroll through. So when asked for regarding the current school year, would you prefer regional meetings, statewide conference, or neither? Fully half of them said regional meetings, and only 20% said the statewide conference. If you scroll down to the next section, Going Forward, they love the idea of a state conference. Lucy, can you scroll to the second chart? Can you scroll to the second circle graph, please? Thanks. So two-thirds of them said that they liked the idea of alternating years. Regionals one year, state conference the, in alternate years. And then the, the two bar graphs below that are questions about how, did they think that the regional meetings for school leaders would add value? And then the one under that, would regional meetings for board members add value? And then at the very bottom, there's some suggestions that people put in the comments section.
Yes. We're, we're getting the number of governing.
Thank you. Thanks. And, you know, responses were so few. I mean, hopefully it's a representative sample, because I really just had to ask for a few day turnaround. Didn't know, didn't know that this was even being contemplated until the budget subcommittee, the last budget Subcommittee meeting.
I shake that notion of looking at combining with PCS and M. You know, because I get it. It's hard for people to come up twice. You know, it's, it is nice, but you're asking, you know, you, you know, and that's why I, I support more the regional meetings, because we are asking volunteers to drive all the way to Albuquerque.
Speaking.
And that is, that is hard.
Speaking of driving, the state has changed its mileage rules. So not a single CSD staff member would be able to stay at the Tamaya if we partnered. We would all have to drive there and back from Santa Fe and Albuquerque.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think, I don't think they're going to change it for us.
That's true. I, I get it, but it's an interesting concept. And I, and it would be in the future to be able to look at, at some place. Because I know the state changed the mileage requirement. What is it now? Well, it's, you have to be 50 miles. They're saying Tamaya is not 50 miles from Santa Fe.
Fifty-eight.
I bet it's been.
Fifty-eight state charters?
It's associated. So.
Fifty-eight.
But an hour per governor's talk is held at Tamaya. Staff did stay, so they didn't actually get up at five in the morning and.
We can get them by the.
What they're saying now is they, they have to stay on their own dime. Because it's not 50 miles away, and it has to be 50 miles away. Even though I know after that, that P E C had conferences at Tamaya. That I know. Just saying. But they, they notified us that it would, they would not reimburse for the hotel fees for staying.
It doesn't matter, it's the state rules.
Doesn't matter, state, they're saying state rules. It's the same thing with, if you can stay tonight, because you're more than 50 miles. If we were in, in Los Angeles having a meeting, we can't say, well, it's coming out of our 2%, we're going to pay for your hotel room. Because you have to use that reimbursement form that goes through.
Yeah. It would be like, oh, you guys can stay across the street here.
Anyway, I, I didn't mean to get us off track. But, but yeah, so, so if commissioners, if you want to look at the, at the survey results before you, before you vote tomorrow. But it, you know, certainly it does look like the few respondents we had liked the idea of taking a pause for this year on the state conference. Yes, they liked it alternating. I like the idea of it alternating. I think, I mean, I think it could be really, it could be really good. Because then, you know, every other year, the state conference could be terrific. And we, and we could partner with PCS and M. I mean, I, there is no reason we couldn't, you know? It, it, it just seems like, and so many schools, school leaders said, why don't you? Why don't you? Why don't you? And, I mean, if PCS and M is amenable, I mean, I'm certainly amenable. What? Well, the district, see, if P, if we were part, if, so if PCS and M was, was partnering, because I think they charge, they charge people to go anyway, don't they? So, but, but the P E C could pay for the state charter school registration fee, and then let the district pay for the.
And they just got to not do it on renewal weeks.
Right.
That's the biggest problem with them, is they always do it when we have renewal.
A different cycle.
And so.
This pause allows us.
Right.
To get in a different cycle.
And for the first time in, since I've been at the Charter Schools Division, anyway, I'm, we are in closer contact and collaborating more with PCS and M. I, Valerie and I have set up a weekly 30-minute check-in. So I, I foresee increased collaboration and decreased miscommunication and duplication of effort.
So I share, should we just run through the rest of the work sessions? Because there was.
What we're on. We're on the Budget Subcommittee.
Well, I thought, well, oh, you're on Charter Performance too, right?
I do, but we, so we use this conference piece.
Okay.
I just wanted to add one more thing to the Budget Subcommittee, because we did talk about moving forward and quickly on the award, the Charter Awards, similar to what we did last year. I sent Bridgette a sample of the letter that went out to the schools introducing it, and the, a sample of the award letter. So we're moving forward and hoping that more schools are, are participating this year. Because I think there was a level of, it can't be really, there's got to be a catch to this. And there was a, a level of distrust that was in it. And uncertainty, because we went through that period where Cabinet Secretary said, no, you can't have the money, and it's like, too bad, it's our money. The 10, no, the $10,000 Charter Performance Award, that award, that comes out of us. So that we're moving forward with. Charter Performance, we did meet. We're still fleshing out, and hopefully we're setting up a meeting with EpiCenter.
Mary will be there at the September 2nd meeting.
Oh, at our.
The Charter Performance Subcommittee.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that we can, because there's, there's things that EpiCenter should be doing that they're not doing. Yes, he's on the, yeah. I do, but we did.
He is not on the Charter Performance. But Consuelo, if you're listening, can you invite him, please?
Yeah.
I think we did invite him to the September 2nd one, but I'll, I'll message Consuelo and make sure we do.
Yeah, yeah.
We have the numbers now. 57 state charter board members attended the 2025 conference and got Governance Council training.
Seven charter board members?
Yes.
Because the question I asked was.
Not schools. You want numbers, charter schools?
I just want to know, like, if we had 15, 60 schools, was there at least one board member from each? That's what I'd ask. Yeah, I don't care how many. Yeah, what do I know? I, I, it would be interesting to see how many charter schools. I don't care enough to have, you have to spend a half an hour getting it. So you're welcome.
A lot of them. Okay, all right. Policy Sam is gone, so they'll do an update tomorrow.
I think he, he just wanted me to do a quick update.
Okay.
So we are looking at a merger process. Sam asked CSD to provide a consideration document, kind of a short version of what everyone should, you know, what should be in that policy. They did that, have gotten a little bit of feedback on that, but we're going to discuss it next time we meet. The intervention ladder is kind of pre-intervention ladder processes. We did a draft policy of that, and we've given it to Bridgette to take a look at, which I do not think she's had time to take a look at that yet. But then, I don't know if you can.
I've looked at it, but I don't have something written up for you yet.
Yeah. So that's the next step, is to get the CSD input on that. And although the intervention, kind of pre-intervention ladder process, the E C has been utilizing a process, that's how things are getting on the directors list, and that kind of, that's how you're doing the audits. When schools are coming in front of you, that's how you're doing the academic review when schools are coming in front of you. So it's not that, there isn't necessarily an urgency in that, because the processes are kind of being tested now. And then we have several more things that I think Sam wants to see what the Policy Committee wants to do about them or not in terms of moving forward, so that we can have clarity of what the Subcommittee wants to be looking at. Becca walked by and told me that the indicators of success hasn't met your meeting in a week. Next week, and.
Oh, Becca didn't respond, I am confident.
And then she. The strategic plan, she said that that group will start to report back to the whole soon in more detail.
Did meet. And we're, we're working on trying to get the contractor to, we need someone who's going to contract to give us that, this is what you really need to look at immediately. This is what can, you know, wait, take a pause for, you know, two years. So take a look at that. Okay. We're going to move on to number six, but we're skipping the L E S C until tomorrow, because not only was I there, but Becca did the presentation, the fairy tale from PED. And so that'll be a discussion tomorrow. You'll look forward to this. Well, let's wait till tomorrow.
Okay, sure.
For that, so that, you know, yeah. L F C is actually meeting now. So there's no report from them. Commissioner Claus Schillich is not on P S C O C.
Yes, we're, we're going to be meeting on Wednesday next week. We, I had the Subcommittee meeting yesterday. They did actually take an action for a charter school. So who, who? They gave, or at least they started the process of giving all the state portables to School of Dreams Academy, so they can use that as collateral in, when they're trying to work, to figure out a way to get funding for a new, new process, or to get their state match, or however that's going to work. At least it's just an, a step in the right direction. So they did do that. It did give me an opportunity to speak to the, the Chair of the AMS about our situation. And I've spoken to several of the members, and we're going to have, we're going to have to have some conversation pretty soon. And it, it is dependent on the Chair as to what, what things are going to go forward. But I think, I think it's time to exert some significant pressure on the Chair to, to be talking about this. So I'm, I'm really excited about it, and we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, thanks. Is KT still on? Okay. We don't have a report from NIPSE. School Boards Association?
No, apart. If you look at the agenda for tomorrow, there's going to be a decision that we're going to come to, whether or not we continue on the, the New Mexico Library Board have a representative. I don't know. It's.
I'm focused. We absolutely have to have a member on there. I know, I know. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That'll be a huge, a huge commitment on my part, so I don't know.
So, so here's my question. I always assumed that because you were on P S F A, or what are we calling you? P S C O C, that that included anything that was part of P S C O C slash P S F A. That was my assumption, because. Well, I, so that's what I'm saying. My assumption has always been that when you get to be that designee, that that includes anything associated with P S F A, P S C O C. So if that's a Subcommittee meeting, then you get reimbursement. Have you, have you not gotten reimbursement?
No, I've never gotten.
So then go and ask for the reimbursement. It doesn't, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't require a separate rotation here. It's all. It's all encompassed in that designation. Tell me what the name of it again is? It says capital L A on it, so you're good. I don't see, I think that is encompassed in your role as the designee. Yeah, yeah. So I don't, I, I don't think there's any problem. We've had no charter conferences or anything. I don't think anyone has attended anything. Reminder that if you haven't gotten your hotel room, you probably can't. Yeah. You're going to have to stay someplace closer, close, but not, there actually is another Marriott attached to that mall as well. It's not that Marriott, but there is another Marriott attached to it because Uber and cabs or whatever deliver you to that one and then you have to walk through the mall because they don't know the difference. It's the Galleria. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I got my steps in and I didn't have to go outside in the 96% humidity. Yeah. There's a lot of food opportunities there in that mall. Okay? Me too. Yep. All right, we're adjourned for the evening.